When I came in, I said, "Well, why don't you come up?"
Wow, this is exhausting.
Yeah, well, what was the horrible thing coming back? Was they ran us through full security every single day?
Yeah, that's him on the front seat.
I believe it's six o'clock. They're serious about that over there. Who'd you fly?
Uh, it was United, Lufthansa, and Austrian Air. We hated Austrian Air, we'll never fly them anywhere again. A walk first.
Yeah, yeah.
Lufthansa was okay, and United was fine.
Yes, I need to pray. Yes.
Let's call the meeting to order, please. This is the City of Canton Council Meeting, March 21st, 2019. If you would, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Wilson?
Would you pray with me? Heavenly Father, for all of your blessings, we are thankful. We pray that you will be with the city council tonight, with the leaders all throughout our land. Thank you for letting us hear those requests that are closest to our community. We pray for your wisdom as we make decisions that affect more than just us. Be with us always, in your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Okay, we have a consideration to approve the agenda. I would like to add an executive session to the agenda to discuss real estate and litigation. Are there any other additions or changes that need to be made? Okay, if not, entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Grant made the motion, Mr. Yon seconded the motion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All members voting for the motion. Okay, now we are having our, I believe, again, this is our second public hearing.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. This is a second public hearing in regards to amendments related to the enhanced impact fee program, which would entail amendments within the chapter 106 definitions, as well as chapter 113 on impact fees.
Okay, we will.
This is a total of a lot of consequences to play a role in this impact fee law.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing for any comments. Anyone have any comments? Actually, I don't think anyone signed up to speak, but just in case, is there anyone that would like to make any comments regarding that amendment to the Development Code? Okay, we will close that public hearing then. All right, and we'll move along with the guests and visitors. We appreciate everyone being here, welcome. Chief Mitchell, we have some employee recognitions for February and the February crime report.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor, Council, City Manager. Have some employee achievements that we're proud to announce at this council meeting. If I can have Sergeant Gregory Ayers, Sergeant Jose Soto, Corporal Kyle Hairhust, and Corporal Adam Yerkowski step forward, please. Let's face the audience. These newly promoted supervisors, the two sergeants and corporals, received their attention to orders to their new ranks on Tuesday, March 12th. Before that, several weeks prior to that, they went through a very comprehensive promotion assessment and did very well, and we feel that they're going to be very excellent fits in their due positions, which they have took command as of yesterday, the 20th. So, we strongly believe in our philosophy is career development, and these officers, newly promoted corporals and sergeants, are showing just that, that they're going to be the new future leaders of this organization, and have worked very hard to get where they are, and they have the attitude, the mindset, and the heart for our department and for this community. So, just wanted to present them to you, proud of their accomplishments, and just want to let them know publicly, congratulations. Staying in the same tune with career development, if I can have Sergeant Jesse Ray step forward. Sergeant Ray just completed his Georgia Peace Officer Management Certification. He first obtained his supervisory certification through the state last year, and now has completed his management certification, which is 120 hours of dedicated training. This is going to help him, again, we're all talking about career development, help him as he works to obtain credentials needed for future executive positions in law enforcement in this agency. We'll definitely assist them there with this training and his day-to-day duties as a supervisor in our Criminal Investigations Division. So, we publicly want to recognize you and tell you, congratulations, well done, sir. This is our February crime report. If you've had a chance to look at it, what we've answered in February of 2019, 1,650 calls for service. See the arrest there if you have it before you, I just read those, arrest of 87, total traffic contacts of 381. During our monthly session, we call ComStat, where our supervisors get together and look at the crash and the vehicle accident and the crime data. One of our areas of concern, which is dramatically down again, I think it was eight shop liftings for the month. You'll see that we also had some larcenies take place in the city as well, and our strategies are, again, to continue our increased visibility, put in our officers and our new, in our special operations division, which we've added officers to in places where crime and crash, where we can see the crime has been occurring, the day and time, the trends and the pattern, and also that of the accidents. And I wouldn't find it hard to believe, as I reported last month with all the rain that we had in February, we answered 126 accident calls, our calls for service in regards to accidents, and you see the road rates of occurrence there. As I said, we've added two officers to our special operations, and they are continuing our month, our bi-monthly, twice a month, our selective traffic enforcement operations, again, in our areas where we are having the highest amount of crashes and criminal activity. Upcoming community events, on the last page, we just had our read with the cop last week, Facebook Live again, coming up Monday, the 25th, at 6:30. Our Coffee with the Cop is Tuesday, the 26th, got a busy week next week, at the Starbucks on Riverstone, and then we've been recruiting, been promoting a community recruitment expo with many of our local churches, which is going to be on Saturday, the 30th, at St. Paul Amy Church from 1:00 to 3:00. And then you see some case updates there. We also have our report, our monthly Uniform Crime Report through the FBI, our statistics there, a few of those. You see total violent crimes, larceny, shop liftings was, larceny was down, shop liftings was down year-to-month and year-to-date, and then you see the total property crimes and total overall crime was down for year-to-month and also year-to-date, and then our total contacts as far as traffic there at the end of the report. So, anyone have any questions?
Any questions? Good report, thank you, Chief.
Thank you, much.
Very much.
I was just gonna, no, I was gonna comment. I understand you're getting peach passes for all the vehicles that I have reported, is that right?
I think that's, it's going to be presented this evening, I think.
I saw it in your report. Are you planning to apply for peach passes?
I think we have that, Mr. Pepper's in his city manager.
We have a resolution tonight on the agenda that should take care of that.
I didn't know if you were going to take care of it now or then.
No, I think City Manager's going to report for the program. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, in your agenda package, you have the minutes from the March 7th, 2019 meeting. Are there any changes or corrections to be made to those?
I had a question.
Yes.
I know we had discussed it, what did we decide? Do we abstain if we weren't here or not?
You don't have to abstain.
Okay, I just want to clear that up.
If you read them and you didn't see a problem, that's up to you.
Motion to approve.
Second. Mr. Grant made the motion, Mr. Estes seconded the motion. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All members voting for the motion. We did not have anyone sign up for the 10-minute public input period, so we will move forward. That's sort of unusual. Under our consent agenda, we have items to be considered. I will read those. Member of the council would like any of that, any item pulled off for further discussion, will do so. A, approval of 2019 auction items. B, approval of a resolution for Canton Preservation, Inc. C, approval of Canton 2040 Canton Comprehensive Plan 10-Year Update and Capital Improvements Element Update. D, approval of resolution to submit application for Community Development Assistance Program. E, approval of resolution to submit application for 2019 Georgia Placemaking Collaborative Grant. F, approval of resolution for road abandonment and easement along South Etowah Drive. And G, approval of Snovel Engineering Services and Dam Monitoring Contract. That's, all these are items that we've discussed, at least for a couple of meetings, seems like, so I think everyone is familiar. Is there any discussion, or anyone wanting any of them pulled off for further discussion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay, Ms. McGrew made the motion to approve, Mr. Yon seconded the motion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All members voting for the motion. Okay, under old business decision, discussion and possible action on occupational tax review phase one, Chief Financial Officer Nathan Ingram.
Good evening, thank you, Mayor and Council. At the last work session meeting, you heard from myself and Ms. Rachel Bembry with Jack Consulting about moving the city's occupational tax structure from sick standard industrial classification to the North American, North American industrial classification system. This is the first phase implementation, the second phase will be forthcoming sometime probably around summertime, and right now, I just want to reiterate that this is just moving from sick to nakes. That is integrated within our ordinance, so we will need to change some of the structures, the wording within the ordinance, and we'll eventually bring that back to council for y'all's approval as well, probably during the phase two. But this just gives us the instruction to go ahead and start moving that direction.
Okay. Any questions? Comments?
Again, I think, you know, we talked about this a while, a while back, and I had spoken to Mr. Ingram about it several years ago, I think even when Scott Wood was still City Manager, and I think he may have been involved in some of those conversations, but that we were, you know, basically required to do that, and since it's kind of revenue neutral, you know, I don't see anything outlandish or different in there, but I think it's just best practices, and I would motion to approve.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Grant made the motion, Mr. Estes seconded that motion. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All members voting for the motion.
Thank you.
Item B, discussion and possible action on planning commission recommendation for case Z, 1820, Michael Ellis, and the owner is Mountain Reserve LLC, proposed to rezone 26.55 acres along Bell's Ferry Road. Applicant proposes to rezone the subject property from R10 to R4. This has been discussed and actually tabled at least once, I think, so we have that. Is there any discussion or questions to Mr. Patton? Do you have anything you want to add?
I wanted, Mayor and Council, to note, I did paper copy of an email that I received this morning in regards to this rezone case, in which he talked about the change in the stream buffers from the original zoning to the current time is the major and sole reason for requesting the R4 zoning to accommodate the larger, wider stream buffers.
Ken, do you, if this were to be done all over again, would it still be the same direction to come before the planning commission and then before the council if the intent was on basically only the stream buffer?
The applicant could have gone and through a variance process relative to the stream buffer, as well as our zoning buffer requirements. That would still be an avenue available to the applicant and property owner.
Okay.
So, he could apply, again, without having to go through public hearings?
No, variances do require a public hearing, it's a separate process and a separate board.
So, he could come to the variance board with that, right?
Yes.
Any, Mr. Estes?
No, I think we talked a lot about it last meeting, I'd like to make a motion to deny.
We have a motion.
Zoning from R10 to R4.
Okay, we have a motion to deny, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Estes made the motion, Mr. Grant seconded the motion. Is there, are there any other questions, comments, discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All members voting for the motion. Item C, discussion and possible action to adopt the updated impact fee assessment.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Before I begin with the impact fee schedule, want a clarification relative to our public hearing and the amendments to chapter 106 definitions and chapter 113 impact fee ordinance. That did not show up anywhere else on our agenda, I wasn't sure if council was going to make a motion when they closed the public hearing and take action, or if action could be taken, since this is a companion to the impact fee ordinances, the proposed impact fee schedule.
Well, honestly, I was thinking it was over on, over in here too, but this is actually two separate items, right?
Indirectly, yes, sir, you have to adopt the...
I would, I would suggest that we go back and discuss, because it does say a discussion and possible action under that public hearing to amend the Development Code, chapter 106, and if there's, it's the pleasure of the council to take action on that, then we could do that. Is there, would there be a motion to approve, approve that amendment to the Development Code, changing those definitions? It says and impact fees too on there, but...
Motion to approve.
Okay, we're motion, motion to approve the code amendments to chapter 106 definitions and chapter 113 impact fees. Does that include, does that make, is that both of them?
Uh, well...
Is that also C?
Chapter 113 is the impact fee ordinance. That is the local...
Oh, okay, the other one.
...regulation that allows the city to assess the impact fees.
Okay, what we're voting on then now is the approval to amend the Development Code, to amend chapter 106 definitions and chapter 113 impact fees. We'll vote on that, then we'll vote on the schedule.
Yes, sir.
If that makes sense, because the other is a schedule of fees. Okay, all right, does everyone understand what we're doing? Okay, all right. Did we have a motion on that?
We got a question.
And a second?
We need a second.
Second. Mr. Grant made a second. Who made the motion?
I did.
You did, okay.
Yeah.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Okay, all members vote for the motion. Now, we will talk about the possible action to adopt the updated impact fee assessment schedule, and these are the actual hard numbers, so is there...
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. We discussed those at the work session, consultants that worked with us was here two weeks ago. I'm here to answer any questions any of you might have in regards to the proposed new fee schedule.
Mr. Mayor, one thing I wanted to bring to your attention, that I got to thinking about after the last meeting, you know, this will be the first time we've adopted anything on the fee schedule since we consolidated fire services, and so I wanted to go back and check the consolidation agreement that we have as it relates to those impact fees. And so, I pulled the language from the agreement, and basically what the agreement says is that we're going to match the impact fees from the county, and if we revise our impact fees and we go below the counties, then we're in breach of the agreement. Well, currently, our impact fee is higher than the county's for fire, so now would be a good time, if we wanted to, to have our fire impact fee match what their current fee is, which would bring the total impact fees down.
Yes, relative to the residential portion, that would be a reduction of a little over $200 per residential unit, if city council wanted to reduce the proposed fire impact fee to match what the county's current assessment is.
So, that, so that, a little over $200, and if there's 400 homes built next year, that's about $80,000 or $90,000 difference, and that does not include commercial or apartments, buildings, or stuff like that, right?
All commercial does pay a fire impact fee, but the largest reduction, if you will, would be in regards to the residential component, single-family homes, apartments.
That would be the largest reduction?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The reduction in that line.
So, we know, we know it's going to be a minimum of $100,000, at a very minimum, right?
Wouldn't it be more than the line, if we did 400 single-family homes at 200, wouldn't that be about 8,000?
What, 8,000 or 80,000?
Eighty.
Eighty, I believe.
Eighty, yes, sir.
Yeah, so, but it's actually, and I think the numbers that I talked to Billy about, I believe was like $230-something difference between where we are now and what the county fee is. So, that comes up to about $92,000 something, I believe, and that doesn't, does not include any, anything for a commercial, industrial, or other, other impact fees, so I think we need, do we need to include that in this?
So, what I would do is I would just note that it's the goal of council in this fee schedule for our fire impact fee to match the county's fire.
In accordance with the agreement. Yeah, okay.
If, if, if council is inclined to do that, the motion would be to approve the proposed fee schedule, with the exception of the proposed fire impact assessment, and that should match the Cherokee County Fire Assessment.
Okay, that's them.
So moved.
Motion? All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay.
I just ask a quick question.
Yes, go ahead.
For clarification, so the, we, I believe the consultant the last time said that you were kind of have to stay within the buckets, right? So, you can't just take the benefit that's now going to be created in fire and move it to parks and recs, right?
No. No, all of those are allocated to those specific areas, if you will. If there could be another clarification in regards to the motion in the second, what would be the effective date? Council would want the impact fees to be assessed with these new fee schedules.
So, you can, you could make it, we've kind of talked about this, well, I think you would want to make it effective, say, April 1st, because if you make it later on, then you're going to see a rush of people trying to get permits, don't even have plans necessarily in. But if we set April, I mean, you can do it as soon as you pass it, you can do it tomorrow. But if we set April 1st, that gives us time to make sure we have everything in the system that we need and that are ready. It doesn't make sense to delay it further out, you know, and have people take advantage of the system, so.
But do I need to amend the motion that it's April 1st?
Just to be clean, let's vote on the one you have and then make a separate.
Okay.
Well, we have a motion, I believe Ms. Wilson made the motion to approve, and McGrew seconded that motion. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All members voting for the motion. Okay, now, we need a motion as to the effective date of the...
Motion to make the effective date April 1.
Second. Okay, Ms. McGrew made the motion, Ms. Wilson seconded the motion, to make the effective date of the, this impact fee schedule with that, which was already approved about the fire department, fire impact fees, effective April 1 of this year. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All members voting for the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Sorry for any confusion tonight.
That's all right, we got it. We'll get it worked out. All right, item D, discussion and possible action of the American Legion easement. Mr. Dyer?
So, you'll recall, this came before the council on a request from the American Legion to assist with the paving of the parking lot. It led to, I went and looked to see whether we had an actual easement, we do not, so this, this easement agreement I prepared would, obviously, the American Legion would have to agree to it, they're the one granting it, but the intent that I thought we had was that we would pay them that money in exchange for this easement.
Mr. Grant?
One question I had on the easement agreement, it says easements, the road that runs between McClure Street and City Law Station is exhibit A. I was unsure where the parking lot was in here, does, so does that, would that easement run across the parking lot?
Yes.
Okay.
The only question that I have is, it would appear to me that we would need some limiting width on that.
Ideally, we'd get a survey.
Well, I mean, you could, you could, could we not measure the width of where the road that's there and fudge a little bit and say not to exceed, or, you know, 15 feet?
Absolutely. I mean, I, by identifying into that road, it can't be wider than that road. We don't know exactly what it is, but if there was ever a dispute, it would go back to what it was at the time, but sure, we could say not to exceed 10 feet or whatever it is.
You know, it really doesn't matter on that road through there, the only thing is, is that you need to know what you're paying for. In my opinion, you need to know if it's, if it's 20-foot strip wide, that's fine, but you need to know how long it is to know how much, what you're actually paying for, otherwise you wouldn't know, because the paved part doesn't look like the rest of it, does it?
Nope.
Okay.
Sure, all of that is correct. I mean, it's the money part, the American Legion could say to us, "That's not enough money, you're taking our property." I mean, we, all we're saying is, here's our offer, but yeah, I mean, detail, the more detailed, the better, but I really think you'd have to get a survey to really get it detailed.
Well, you could just say not to exceed a width of 15 feet or something like that, couldn't you?
Sure.
Follow the old, old trail that, as you've shown on there, which I think is good as the aerial goes, but if you, if you could narrow it down to some, you know, maximum width there.
Sure.
Mr. Grant?
So, if we took action tonight, this is just to prove the easement, it's not in exchange for the fees, so would we have to vote again on the...
No, I think you would go ahead and vote to pay the money too. I, that's what it all started with, was them asking for the money.
And what was that amount?
Twenty-four hundred?
$2,000 is the figure they gave me of what they need to finish their...
So, the, so the motion to, would be to approve the easement agreement with the change, that it would be limited to 15 feet, let's say. I mean, I think 10 is probably enough to drive a vehicle.
Well, for what's there, I suspect 10 is, but I mean, you know, you could do more to just be sure.
Could the motion also say not to exceed $2,000?
Yes, and to pay them not to exceed $2,000.
Not to exceed $2,000, so moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Grant made the motion, Mr. Yon seconded the motion. Any other discussion?
We threw out 10 and 15, did you want to do 10 or 15 feet width? 15.
15.
That's fine. Okay, any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All members voting for the motion. Now, this is assuming that they signed that easement.
Correct, they may come back to you.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So, basically, you're going, you're going to amend that a little bit to reflect...
I'll add that, the 15-foot width, and then somebody can take it to them and see what they...
Yeah, that's just why there's a lot of county roads, you know? Okay. Item, new business, discussion, discussion of proposed year-end budget amendment. Mr. Ingram?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I apologize that this deviates from your standard procedures and me having to bring this to you during a voting session, but we wanted to get this in front of you all, so you had an opportunity to review it and ask any questions, because we will be asking for potential action on this on the April 1st. because we will be asking for a potential action on this on the April 4th agenda, because time is of the essence. We're trying to get our comprehensive annual financial report issued to the Department of Audits by, by year end. You have in front of you all of the year-end adjustments that have been requested by the auditors to make the CAFR have no or very little negative variances, and I have some explanations if you have any questions on some of those adjustments.
Anybody have any questions, comments?
So these were all recommendations from the auditor?
To, to remove any of the negative variances. Uh, most of these involved some timing, like with sales tax, sales tax seven, where we made some, you know, in purchase of the building. Uh, quite a few of these were involving the purchase of the building, but there were a few other miscellaneous adjustments.
So it looks like the overall amended budget is $500,000 more than?
Right, in the general fund. Yes, sir.
Briefly tell, tell, explain where that $500,000 came, is that additional revenue?
It is, some of it was found additional revenue and licenses, permits, if you'll see there at the very first section. We increased taxes because our taxes and licensed permits both came over budget. So we were changing the budget, the overall budget by $500,000, increasing revenues and then increasing expenditures by the same amount.
About $5,000 additional in revenue, so it's moved the right direction, so, thank you.
So, but the, but you reduced contingencies by 120,000?
We are, yes, sir.
Okay. So the, so the, the balance between 500 and 122,000 would be?
Six hundred.
New money, okay. Anyone else? Okay, then we'll plan to deal with that on April 4th, right?
There's any further questions, by all means. Thank you.
Okay. City manager's report.
The first item is the MOU between the city and state road and tollway authority. Uh, this is basically a program that allows our law enforcement vehicles to get a peach pass at no cost, so that if they have to utilize any of the state's tollways, they can do such without any charges back to the city. Uh, and so Chief Mitchell brought this to my attention, that some of the other local jurisdictions had moved forward with it. It doesn't touch the city limits, but there are times where officers do have to go outside of the city and would be in this area, and so this would expedite their travel and again save city taxpayers' costs. I brought it to you under the city manager's report, just so I could get some feedback from you on if this is something you're okay with. If it is, we'll put it on the April agendas for approval.
There's no drawbacks to it, is there? I mean, is it, what's the obligation, any obligation on behalf of the city in order?
I mean, I, our only, our only real responsibility in this is to make sure our officers aren't abusing it for not, you know, items, so.
Well, with chief won't let that happen.
That's correct.
Did you say there's no cost to the city?
No, there's no cost.
And I can tell you that it, it saves so much time. I was, whenever they started talking about putting in that extra lane, I thought, I am never getting on that death trap, because it looked like it was just, you know, big enough for one car. And then I got on it, and it's wonderful, it saves you so much time, so I am totally in favor of that. That's why I was gonna bring you that before.
And I know sort of the lane doesn't touch the city limits, but do any of our officers, um, I know with the take-home vehicle program, would they be using that for?
Yes, they could use it during that time. They also, they also have, you know, we have training throughout the year in the metropolitan area, they can use it. Transports for inmates or, or the like would be another good use of that.
And the reports you get show the exact time that you're there, so that would be easy to check to make sure it wasn't being abused.
That's right.
Anyone else? Okay.
So are we voting on this, or just, or is it just, or?
No, I, we'll bring it back before you, we've gotta fill out the actual agreement. We'll have a list of the vehicles that are part of it, and we'll, we'll get all that prepared, so it'll be on the April agenda for approval. Uh, the next item I have is, um, a request that we participate in a joint city-county community development assistance project. This is a housing study that initially came to us by way of Cherokee County and the city of Woodstock, uh, where there's a housing study throughout the county to look at workforce housing, among other things. There's, it's $150,000 for the total study. We would receive 120,000 in federal funding as a, as a grant. The local match is 30,000, the city of Canton's contribution would be 7,500 of that. Again, this is just a commitment for the application part. Uh, I'm sure there'll be a little bit more if we're, if we're approved to move forward. But I bring it to you tonight because we received this last Thursday, and we have to have a signed letter by tomorrow.
Okay. Any questions?
The cities, all the other cities are signing on, as far as we know?
As far as we know, yes.
My understanding, city of Woodstock, uh, did their resolution and a letter of support as their meeting cused to not.
Right.
And Holly Springs has done it, I don't know if any of the others are not.
Believe so, and I know the county's done their part.
The partners that are, that have been listed, MUST and the Housing Authority and several other partners, will they be notified that, that the county and the cities are doing this study? And they'll be asked to help with, with some of the answers to these?
I believe under the application process, those groups have to provide a letter of support as well.
They do?
Yes.
Okay, I think that's a good idea, 'cause it'd be good to get them on board.
So, so if it is something you wanna move forward, we'll need action on it tonight. There is a resolution in here, uh, in this attachment that would need to be approved as part of that.
I know we've been talking about affordable housing and workforce, workforce housing for a good while, and I'm happy to see something, see a study done, so that maybe we can move forward with, with some affordable housing and workforce housing.
Ms. McGrew?
Yeah?
I, I like this idea, I think it's time we do something like this. I know people who've lived in Cherokee County all their lives and for many, many years are very sentimental about their pastoral views and their green spaces, and I think it's incumbent upon us to, uh, do what's right about our development and develop smartly and grow wisely. So I make a motion that we pass, that we do this.
Okay, we have a motion to approve this, we have a second.
Second.
See, on seconded the motion. Uh, any other discussion, Mr. Grant?
Yes, I was, again, I'm all in support of, of the study on the workforce housing. My one question is, we discussed a housing study for, for the city of Canton also, which my understanding was, you know, above, above and beyond workforce housing. So does this supplement that, or would this be, are you proposing in lieu of?
I think, I think it's gonna be more of a supplement to, to that larger study. I think it will allow us to maybe not go into the area of workforce housing with our study and let this kinda carry the weight on that, but we can, we can focus on other avenues. Um, I also think, you know, we did the, the market study on the rental analysis. Um, that's something that we could always update as also a portion of that larger housing conversation. Um, but, I mean, I think we need to get started on this part of it first, and that'll give us some ideas on how we can push the other envelope.
I do think it's time we update our rental housing study.
Mr. Grant, were you finished?
Uh, yeah, I, again, so I was just verifying that, that this is, would be one part of our overall, because my understanding is that we were gonna, a part of our study would be doing inventory of existing houses citywide, but also look at, you know, not only workforce housing, but millennial housing, senior housing, just to see rental housing, to see what that mix is. So, again, I'm all in favor of this, and I think it's a great place to start, but I'm certainly in favor of moving forward with the complete studies as soon as possible, because I think it's gonna provide us with really valuable information to make some decisions and, and calculated trade-offs against it.
Okay, anyone else? Yeah, I think, I think it's something we probably ought to do, and, and one thing that, that hopefully we'll be able to do is, is to define affordable housing. If, as one of the objectives and goals, that's the very first one. Uh, I'm, I'm not really sure the difference between workforce housing and affordable housing. And I don't know what they really mean. How do you define affordable housing, affordable to whom? I don't know, and hopefully this will do that. But, and if it does, it'd be worth it to me, for sure.
I think the great thing about it is, you're gonna have our city, the other cities and the county all agreeing to what that definition is.
Right.
And, you know, the, the other benefit of the study, you know, for years, we've felt like as a city, we have most of the low to moderate income housing that's available countywide. I'm hopeful that the study will show that is true and that perhaps the other cities should be doing a little bit more of their part in providing some of those, uh, housing price points as well.
Well, I think that it should be distinguished between affordable housing and workforce, because I would hope that the study would look at senior housing and, as Mr. Grant said, millennial housing, some of the other, rather than just workforce.
So people who don't work, too?
Right.
Okay. Okay. Anything, anyone else? We have a motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those no, all members voting for the motion.
I did wanna give you a quick, uh, update on some projects. Uh, as you can tell, there's a brick before you. Um, the Jones Building, the canopy, the awning system was going up this week, they were finishing that up today. There's still a couple of punch item, uh, punch list items left, but the majority of Phase 1 is completed, so I wanna let you know that. Um, additionally, uh, we'll be setting up a date and time for you to take a tour of the Police Department Municipal Court, uh, project, uh, we're wrapping up that. Uh, it really looks great on there, Chief and, and, and Ms. Teresa Fitz and, and our staff have done a great job on that facility. We have removed signs from the old Police Department building and notified our friends last night at the Main Street Mixer as part of the Main Street program that that is a public parking lot, they can go ahead and start parking in that lot if they, if they would like to. Uh, so we've made that available. Today, we had a pre, a mandatory pre-bid meeting for, uh, proposers on our parking deck. Uh, we had that this morning, and we had several firms that showed up for that. Those proposals are due, uh, next week. There will be an item on the agenda in April related to sewer and also trails. So one of the things you're gonna see is that, uh, there will be, uh, a project that we're gonna be proposing moving forward on the design side, which expands our sewer from where we left off on Old Ball Ground and follows it through Heritage Park all the way to the wastewater treatment facility. In conjunction with that project, we are requesting that they design the trail simultaneously on that side of the river so that we can bid that out as one construction project. And then the last thing I wanted to note, uh, if you are in Edwah River Park and you get a chance to look, um, our, our friends with the Cooperative Extension, uh, Service have started the installation of the Bluebird Houses on the Bluebird Trail along the river. And so those are going in this week, I believe there'll be a story in the newspaper sometime as well, because some pictures were taken there. Uh, but they're working hard on that, and they'll be moving over into Heritage Park in the, in the next couple of weeks. We're excited about that project. That's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Any questions? Oh, Ms. McGrew? Ms. McGrew?
Thank you, and I'm sorry to put you on the spot, so if you don't have the answers to this, email me, that's just fine. I haven't gotten any complaints lately about the trash service, and there was a ride-along in a truck or two. Can you tell me how the trash service is going and are they meeting the, all of the expectations now?
Yes, ma'am, we had a meeting yesterday with our representatives from Advanced Disposal. Uh, we still get an occasional misservice, that happens, uh, and that, that's likely to continue to happen. Um, our calls for service issues have gone down dramatically. Um, one of the things that we did ask Advanced Disposal to do was an audit, uh, of their trash route. Uh, I believe they finished all but maybe one section of that route as of yesterday. Um, one of the things that we specifically asked them as part of that audit was to look at the number of residential units that had multiple carts. So for our citizens that may not know, if you traditionally use more than one cart, you have excess bags, you can add a second cart for a lower fee than the first cart, so you can have two carts. We believe that when the initial carts were deployed, that perhaps some residences have multiple carts and have not been paying for the second carts, and so we're reviewing that. And then we're getting in touch with those customers and saying, hey, we noticed that you've got a second cart, here's the fee associated with that second cart. If you don't want the second cart, let us know, we'll go pick it up, we'll service it and we'll pick it up. Uh, if you do want the second cart, this is the fee and we'll immediately start putting it on the billing. So that's kind of the next phase that we're in. And then the last thing that we're working on is the recycling audit. It's less of, less on our end of, um, a cost. We need to know how many of our customers are actually recycling customers. And so they're gonna be comparing, you know, who's putting out the recycling cart versus what we have in our records, so that we don't have the same issue that we had this time when we bid out the contract, where we were under the impression we had, you know, some 1,400 recycling customers and we really have 4,000 recycling customers. Yes, sir.
Two questions, one, um, I won't, I don't know if this is true or false, I've heard it both ways. Does everything that's picked up have to be in that cart? You cannot put anything outside that cart?
So they have been picking up on the outside of the cart. They started doing that in January, and part of the reason why they did that was because there were lots of people that were upset, the old vendor picked up outside of the cart. If it is something that occurs rarely, you know, you've got a, you've got a cart at your house and occasionally you have an extra bag, if that makes sense. You've had family over the, the weekend, you've had a party or whatever, you've got an extra bag, they'll grab it. If you have excess bags every week, they're gonna notify the city. The city's gonna reach out and say, you need a second cart.
That was my second question, do you know what the fee is for the second cart?
$8.50 for the second cart.
Okay, thank you.
And we do have a number of residential units that do have second carts. The other thing I wanted to bring to your attention, I don't think we've set the date yet. Um, but if you would like to, uh, we've been invited to invite you to come and take a tour of the recycling facility that Advanced Disposal utilizes. Uh, we'll probably plan it for a Friday. Uh, one reason, it'll give you a chance to see some of the recycling that actually comes from Canton. Uh, so you can see the status of our recycling as it arrives there, and you can find out for yourselves what, what gets recycled, what's contaminated and has to be trashed, and how they do that process of sorting and going through what's there. We're also gonna be working on our side on some public information so that our customers know what can be recycled, what can't be recycled, that kind of thing as well. A lot of people have different ideas of recycling, you know, people will put the plastic grocery bags in their recycling cart, you can't recycle those. Or they'll put the pizza box in the, in the recycling cart, but it's greasy and has food on it. That can't be recycled, it's contaminated. So we're gonna do some educational things on our side for our customers as well, uh, with Advanced Disposal.
So, so where is that? Where's the recycling facility?
North Fulton, North Fulton, close to Forsyth.
Oh, okay, Ms. Wilson?
Behind the old city hall, behind the police station, are those two, are those two bins back there recycling, or is that just trash?
We, we have one trash bin that's back there, we have cardboard recycling bins as well.
Just cardboard or magazines and papers and things?
Oh, it is single stream, I'm sorry, so it is, it is all.
So a lot of?
It is all except for glass. The only glass recycling we offer is at the Ridge.
I think a lot of our, you know, it may be hard to decide how many, to know how many customers are recycling, 'cause I think a lot of people go there, will take their recycling.
I have challenged Advanced Disposal, because based on the number of recycling customers, I do not see how we do not win the mayor's recycling challenge every year. And I have challenged them to?
I think it's rigged.
I have challenged them to give us really good numbers on weight. Because now that we know we've got many more customers taking advantage of it, there's no reason why we shouldn't crush the competition.
Our previous carrier said we had a lot, a lot more than most communities, yeah. Because when we started this, they, they, they didn't think we were going to have it. And I kept saying, yes, we will. And we did. And so they, they said, you were right. But it's always been a very good program.
Well, I specifically asked Advance to give me a list of 10 items that come through recycling that they see the most, that cannot be recycled. You know, because a lot of people just don't think, think clearly about things. They get vacuum cleaners and batteries and, you know, all sorts of things that people think they can just recycle and, and you can't. So we're going to try to help out with that information.
One other question I would ask?
Yes, sir.
I had someone call. I'm not for sure on this either. I know that the other group picked up mattresses. I had someone else ask me, do you still do that?
So under our contract with them, you are allowed a bulk item pickup every week. Now, you do have to call ahead and schedule the bulk item pickup. And so if you'll call downstairs to our utility billing, or if you'll call the number on the can, we can get it scheduled for you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Grant?
We're done with the trash talk. On the former police station parking, could we, in the two entrances there, could we put, even if it's temporary, just something simple? Parking signs at that, because especially on, or could we put a, a sign that says Municipal Court Parking? I noticed last, or when it was, I think it was last Wednesday when it was in session. But, I mean, they're just, they take up all those parking spots and that spot, that parking lot was just sitting there empty. But I think even though it was mentioned at the Main Street Mixer last night, it'd be great just for public and people coming from out of town. Know that they can park there again for whatever time we can have those up, but.
So we, we'll do two things there. We'll post some signs for public parking at that lot. And we'll also make sure we've got some educational pieces posted at Municipal Court. Letting our folks know where they can and cannot park. So that when they do come for their court date, it's apparent where they can park.
I think it'd be a great, even that, the entrance on Church Street, because they tend to take up all those spaces there. But I think it'd probably be more convenient parking for them as well, so, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I was going to say, when I went for my jury orientation, Patty Baker did an excellent talk about what, where to go. So if we sent her a memo, she could include that in her orientation to jurors.
I know that this morning when we had our pre-bid meeting on the parking deck, one of the things that we stressed to all of the, all of the proposers is that we have limited sites. And so from that standpoint, we're, we're needing their assistance also to help us figure out how we deal with parking in the interim during the design and construction of that facility. And also to let them know they have minimal site where they can lay down materials and shut things down for the construction of that. And so we're trying to be very proactive on that facility, because we know it will have an impact downtown. And so, you know, every parking space counts in the downtown area.
Opening those at the Jones Building helps too.
That's right. That's right.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
All right, it's my time now. I'd like to follow, really follow up on the, the bricks and the fact that the Jones Building is, the exterior is now basically complete. Restoration, phase one. Now it's time to consider phase two. I mean, we kind of, kind of put that off and not want to do it. Canton is not a destination, but it could be. It's not a destination right now. I would love personally to see, and this is just me, but in my opinion, I'd love to see that as a cultural arts center with a gallery, event space, museum, and other event space there. I think it could be a focal point that would make people actually come to downtown Canton to see that. And it should complement, in my opinion, the history museum that we're going to be having hopefully fairly, fairly soon. So, I mean, Canton ought to be a destination, because a destination is where you, you have a lot of visitors come in. You don't have a lot of responsibility to services to pay, to, they, they don't cost you a lot. They don't cost you as much as a resident and those who live here and it's here every day. They're passing through. So they, they can, and, you know, we get their money and, and they move on. And that's sort of what this is about. But I think, I think that as a focal point, as a anchor to our downtown would help to make this city a destination. And I think, I think it could be done. Well, yeah, yeah, it's a lot of money to deal with. Doesn't have, wouldn't have to be done all at one time. It could be done in phases. Or something that had been mentioned earlier, talking about recreational activities and the possibility of, you know, actually having a bond referendum to complete our trail system. Which I think would be an excellent idea to get that trail system moving even, even faster than we are now and get it, get it done. Would be to include that Jones Building in, in with that bond referendum. The museum is certainly, and cultural arts center is certainly recreational activity. So, I mean, that's something that could be done. But I'm just throwing this out there, because I think, you know, we've sort of side, pushed aside the real decision on what we want to do with it. Or do we want to get rid of it, sell it, or, you know, burn it down or whatever? I don't know. Make a parking lot out of it, you know? I mean, the decision is going to be these folks sitting up here. And, but it's time we made that decision and that we move, move forward with it in some, some manner. So just want you to be thinking about that if you would please.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
I would, I would agree with that. It seems that Canton for years has not been a real destination. We, we, as we came on, they said, what do you do here in Canton after 12 o'clock on Saturday? And back then, there was nothing to do. Now there's a lot more to do. But we send our children to Bartow County to three museums and every school goes over there. You know, every, well, most of the time it's the parents go as well. Sometimes the grandparents go as well. And all the schoolchildren go there. Why not consider putting a children's science museum here along with things like the mayor just mentioned? We do need a, a cultural arts center. We, we could use a museum. We have a lot of people with art in this county who would actually loan that out. And they already do to other places. It's just a beautiful building. It's, it's, it is Canton. Regardless of what you want it to be or not, it is known, that is known as Canton. That center of building right there. It's, it's part of history. And I, I for one do not want to see that go in anything else other than this city running that. Because people are always looking for something to do with their kids. And it'll bring not only the parents, but the grandparents. And it'll be a destination for everybody to come see and the things the kids could enjoy.
Thank you. I, I will say one other, one other thing, and that is that, you know, I think at our retreat in Chattanooga, I think we saw a museum that is apparently run very well. And is truly an asset to that community. And some of the development and, and improvements in the buildings and infrastructure and so forth around it. I think have sort of made that like a destination for that area of Chattanooga. It's just amazing. And I, I think the same thing could happen here. But we'll keep that in mind. Let's move forward with, with making a decision ultimately here. Okay, we need to adjourn to executive session to discuss real estate and litigation. Is there a motion to, that we will not be coming back out for any votes, so. Mr. Grant made the motion.
Second.
Rested, seconded the motion. All in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Foes no. All members vote for the motion. Okay.